Good for you.
Thank you. Is this, um, me for, am I supposed to have this?
I don't know. Oh, is that the sign in?
I have.
Well, there you go. All right. Uh, six old.
Why?
I turned it on and I exploded.
Thank you. Meeting is open. Uh, we are being recorded a couple times. We've got some, um. All right, what are we doing first? Do you want us to do minutes first? Let's think. This meeting held on the floor, we're doing the round table. Let's do this examination of meeting minutes. Um, so we just got one, October twentieth. With all sorts of motions. Uh, it says return for shredding. I don't see that one here.
No, it's not on the agenda. It's just the, um. What do you mean you don't see it? It should be in your phone.
I don't see it on the agenda, but I see it.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda because I just did it an hour ago. More conservation talk?
New conservation meeting?
Yeah.
A national club? Uh, I'm not sure. I thought there was one scheduled.
Somebody stopped me. I think I should stop.
Her name's great. Does she want to be on the side next to me?
Nice.
Going on? Is that your daughter?
Yeah.
That's fine. What's her name?
Nora.
Nora.
It's got you down.
Gossip.
Debbie's your mom?
No.
Oh, no.
I was reading.
Without a chair for the window.
Oh. I was about to say, I'm sorry, but.
All right, motion to approve, um, meeting minutes of October twentieth and executive session meeting minutes from September fifteenth. Any discussion?
Here.
All in favor?
Were from October twentieth. I did not change the date on the top. I'm sorry. Could you circle the date on the top and I'll?
Oh, up here? So both meeting minutes from October twentieth.
Sorry.
As amended.
I use the previous one and I frequently forget to do that. Call myself every time and let me do that next time.
All right.
So no promises.
Listen, I, uh, had a room full of fifth graders. All agree on the wrong answer, decimals. Thank God the head of the math department came to congratulate me.
How did that work out for him?
Well, her.
Her.
I probably confused them thoroughly. All right, we've got, uh, special town meeting warrant for November seventeenth at seven P M. All right, so we are hosting this tonight. Are we hosting it tonight or no?
Supposed to be here. Let me go double check.
You want to put this on, uh, on the sign up by the post office?
The meeting.
Town meeting.
Was it wrong?
No.
No, just the notification that the special town meeting, November seventeenth.
Do you want him to put the letters up that just announced that there's a meeting on the board? Just with the date and the time.
No.
This will be posted by the council once it's signed.
Yeah, I know.
All right, so we just have.
Oh, I'm still article. Is that what you usually do?
Yeah, we, he did it for the last one.
Please.
He did it for the last one.
Right.
I will put that on the procedure as well.
You got it.
Thank you. All right, so we've got Article One, which is the temporary, um, moratorium, and then we've got Article Two, which is, um, paying a bill for the water, which is hopefully the last time we ever have to see or talk about that. Then we have Article Three, a bill for highway. Four, five more bills. Six is funding the highway department expense for the bathroom. All right, um, the highway department expense transferring fourteen thousand seven hundred fifty from reserve to the.
Oh, in the war.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
So yeah, it looks good and it's all approved by town council?
Yes.
So.
Hold on it?
Yes, so.
Motion that's.
What?
Beta bill.
No, motion to approve the warrant.
Yeah, approve the warrant, okay.
Town meeting. I fucking love. Um, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. Do you want me to put the date on that? Today's date on the bottom? And today's the twenty seventh? Days of, oh yeah. On this, this is where I was getting twenty seventh day of October.
There you go.
Yes. Um, and then we have two letters to approve for requesting that we plow the roads, Eagle Club and Maple, we do every year, um. Ray didn't, does Ray know that they came in? Does he have any comments on it? Do we know?
Perhaps.
Does Ray know the request came in?
Oh yeah, I get him copies of it. I'll take care of that every year.
Thank you so much. Uh, motion to approve, um, for highway to plow Maple Lane and Eagle Club Road this season?
Sure.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi. And then we've got the report from Hilltown Ambulance. Just really tiny. Got it. Thank you. Uh, total calls thirty one. They responded to twenty seven of those calls, transported nineteen. They did not have any intercept. An average tone to response is twenty two, twenty two seconds, average response is sixteen minutes nine seconds. That's better than it normally is. I think about one minute. Yeah.
Right.
And then, oh, for the lie, the average response time was thirteen minutes. Yeah, I just texted Adam too. Who else are we looking for?
Oh, I was looking for police because I had asked them to be here to sign the warrant, but there's no one down there right now, but I did send them a text again.
Okay.
All right.
People else? Who are you looking for?
The police.
We send.
Adam's not coming. You know, that Ray's not coming. Uh, Margaret is supposed to be here, uh, because she wanted to, maybe she's not coming.
All right, um, so if all of our boards want to join us at this table. Do we have, so we don't have council on aging. We don't have fire or highway.
The two big, uh, two big.
Capital expense expenditures.
And I think that when we sent out, we said that people needed to send representatives. They weren't coming, right?
Uh, Ray texted me like an hour or two ago and said that he wasn't feeling well.
Well, we don't really hear.
Sure.
Um, is that it? We have assessors, we have library, water, town clerk and help.
Okay.
All right, so, um, does everyone have a copy of the capital expense that we just passed out? But I really need my reading glasses for it.
Let's work. You can't use mine. You've already tried.
No, I've already tried.
They're still a little bit bigger.
Got me to hold over here for you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It's gotten to that point.
I have my mag.
Um, just to touch base from last time, has everyone seen improvements or more understanding with accounting since our last meeting? Any changes, positive changes?
Positive.
I mean, everything was okay last time and then Kelly reached out to me and resolved the issues from the last fiscal year.
Great.
So everything was filed away correctly to my knowledge.
Okay.
So, um, you know, that was more recently than is reflected. So I think I'll see it like probably in the next few days.
Anyone else? Any changes or still concerns about that?
Kelly's still working on ours. She's still working.
Eat anything? No?
I talked to Kelly today on water because you've got those amendments coming up and things are looking really good, so.
Great.
Where she's got it back in where it needs to be, which is good for the new year. So Jasmine's been great helping.
That's excellent.
Okay, so we're having some success here. Do you want to take over with capital? I know that you sent her up and that was your.
Well, when, um, when everybody met during budget season, we laid out what everybody needed from a capital expenditure standpoint at that point. Okay, and so at the end of the budget season, this, in this last budget season, I laid out on this spreadsheet that you have in front of you. Um, this is just to share, there's a document out there that was created, I don't know, back in twenty four, maybe twenty three, before my time. Looks like this. I don't know if we did this.
That would have been.
P V P.
Josh with P V P C or? That was Christopher.
Okay, so what I, all I did was take this document that's already kind of the vision, plan, whatever you want to call it, and laid it out on here to say what was in the document, right? And then where did we come in this last year? So for people wanting and needing things, so I felt it was, you know, or we all thought that the best thing might be to, let's just walk through what we talked about so far in twenty five. Because the board hasn't approved any of these capital expenditures except for maybe a couple. And, um, once free cash is free, there may be something else that we may want to.
Yeah.
Purchase because you don't want to hold out on making those investments and then all of a sudden, boom, you get bottlenecked and everything's due. Um, so just to go through, I mean, the plan for twenty four is passed, right? But the plan, um, for twenty six, I think, is where we probably need to talk.
Okay.
Um, from an admit, if we just go through the, the list here, and then if there's something else that you say, oh, you know, that really shouldn't be on there, I don't, you know, I don't need that anymore, or we already purchased that or whatever. We should take it off and make this kind of a running list of work of capital expenditures. Um, so from an administration standpoint, upgrade the Blanford Town Hall to M E M A and D P H standards. Was that ever done?
No.
No. Is that something that needs to be done?
I mean, it was identified in the plan, so, um.
I'm trying to think of what that's.
I don't know why they took twenty two thousand dollars there because.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what drove that. That wasn't this last budget. Um, that was in this.
Did this have to do with the generator? Does meat would not?
You can't have this as an emergency facility without that generator taking.
Yeah, I'm wondering if this, these funds had to do with the twenty two thousand had to do with just like completing something with the generator.
We did use Arvo for the generator and the identified sources.
I bet that's what it is.
Okay.
So I think we is our.
Paid for it.
Our generator.
We paid for the generator.
But do we think we still need some funding to get it all hooked up and?
Absolutely.
So we may want to carry that over and just double check what we think the cost of innovative or setup.
So is it, okay, if we put you on that, Christina, follow up?
So I'm just going to write generator setup.
Property condition assessment?
You guys had at one point voted that fifty thousand into now, so that is set aside.
It is set aside. Okay, so it's up from thirty to fifty?
That's what was, that's what was set aside for the property conditions.
Is there a copy of this online for Adam? I just saw that he joined.
Adam is joining. Uh, Margaret didn't answer and the chief is sending an officer over right now.
Thank you, Julian. I don't think there is a copy online, but I can send him a copy.
Okay, actually, I think, do I have a? You sent me this off board. Adam, I'm going to send you something now. The sheet that we're looking at.
Do we see the fifty thousand, uh, do we see the property assessment, I should say, because it could be less than, um, in the spring?
I don't know. We have to identify, uh, a vendor that can do, because it was a roof, I guess, originally that you guys wanted to look into. So, but I know that there's more than just a roof assessment that needs to be done here, so.
Yeah.
To avoid any sort of fit splitting.
Yeah.
We have to probably go, we have to go out to big guys.
Okay.
Find a vendor that can.
Kind of do it all.
Do it all. All right, okay.
But that's already set aside, so that's. Okay, was there anything else that you could think of that you would need to do?
I mean, so many things.
That's a big thing. I mean, if that gets done, then we have a plan at least, right?
I mean, the electricity, we never finished that project.
You mean the generator?
Moving the electric under ground, right?
Yeah, moving upstairs.
Now, remember, did we have to replace? Am I crazy? Um, electric never got back to us. We had to take this system that was running above ground and run it underground?
It is underground.
It is underground and that.
Was it vice versa then? Sorry, we had to run it above ground? No?
They had to fix the.
Yeah, they fixed wood.
Yeah.
So that's all completely repaired. That's not a problem anymore.
It's.
I'm not putting my stamp in the door, so not now.
But it hasn't posed any problems.
No, it hasn't.
What about the water situation that Margaret was talking about with the mold and stuff?
So that's an issue with drainage outside. I think there's like a pitch issue and like they probably need some French drains.
So maybe should we look at some sort of consulting to, um, give us some ideas of how to repair that?
I think what we need is a property management. For the hundreds.
Right?
Yeah, because it comes down the sidewalk and then you have the drainage on each side of the sidewalk, so the water just comes sidewalk and it's right at the door.
Is there any aspect of the property management we can build into a capital plan or that's a yearly?
That would be.
I would think. Yeah, it would be higher.
Yes, right.
I mean, that's, let's talk about that for a second because it comes up over and over and over again. It came up in our hazard mitigation discussion and it keeps getting pushed off. So how do we really want to address property management?
I mean, we need to think about, you drew up a job description for us already, correct? And sent us that? No, that was a different one.
Property management. That was for templated.
Oh, sorry. So we need to look at a description and then how much we would need to spend for that position? And is it just town hall or are we talking?
No, I, my suggestion would be all town owned properties or green spaces.
So I guess that's our first step is looking at how much we need to fund.
Well.
Well, or.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would say to decide, do you want to hire somebody that is an employee of the town of Blanford or do you want to contract a company?
Okay, so yeah.
Which?
No, I mean.
My suggestion would be. Let's look at the job description first.
Yeah.
And kind of assess, does that encapsulate everything you're thinking of or everything any of the else is thinking of? Because there's more than just this building and then determine what the approach is. I'm sure we're all in agreement, what's in that?
Exactly. And creating a new position is chaotic and I think hiring, outsourcing would be a little bit easier. It's not coming from the job as already.
Well, and you know, I mean, there's all kinds of things we could do, check with other towns or they do something like that. Who do they use? All that stuff, but let's start with the job description. If we could do that and maybe at some of the future meetings, discuss that job description and agree what's in scope, what's out of scope.
Yeah.
Okay. Because that's going to determine how much you're willing to spend and does anything change through numbers come down someplace else and up someplace else? I don't.
It was just one, one thing I was going to add to that. Can we have it include more than just the town hall buildings like?
Yeah, it does.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Absolutely. Yeah, and that's what I mean by scope. Like, what's the scope?
Yeah, yeah. That I was speaking specifically of the like job description thingy that we were just talking about.
Yeah.
What are we calling again? Building?
Is there anything else that you can?
I mean, I could go on, but that, that's the top of my list, probably honestly. Need to invest in our, in town owned properties because they're just falling apart.
Yeah. Let me ask a question. And again, it's not my world. So does property maintenance, would they be someone that would hire somebody to do a building assessment?
They could, or you could, it depends on what the R F, if, if we're going out to bid for a company, we'd include in the R F P that they do property assessments, right?
Okay. Let's make that the priority.
Okay.
Anything else that has been hanging out there that needs to?
Of any of the buildings or?
I mean, you're going to have brand buildings.
Yeah. Hopefully. Let's hope. Anything for water, um, heat, building wise?
Not off the top of my head. Nothing major.
Out of the fire station's pretty solid, right?
Yeah, I mean, I do think depending on what happens, like, at some point, we're going to have to decide on like roof stuff and things like that for that building. Hopefully it's to tear it down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there is, I mean, it's a valid point because if we don't move on some of this stuff, it's going to get to the point where you're going to have.
We're going to start to start putting money into it.
No, no, even the bathroom and the highway, right? We had to beat that up a little bit, although it was less expensive by far, but still.
Yeah.
Still not going to be a great bath. It's just fixing.
I want to hear any complaints about people's bathrooms.
Did you have a?
No, I was just going to make mention too that this might end up being a sooner problem rather than later because when we're talking about like the ice and the French drains that need to be outside, like I frequent the park with my kids like every winter, first lighting. And there are like times when we will just get swallowed up by the water, like there's water underneath, a lot of like the.
All the wetland.
Of it, oh, yeah. And I know enough to like stay away from it, but just in worry of maybe like a lawsuit or something that could happen for someone that doesn't know that this may end up being a problem that maybe can't wait.
Yeah.
Very long, so I'm just, I just wanted to put it out there.
Yeah, I know. It's awful.
An issue, yeah.
We cut it into the basement.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, let's move on to cemetery. I think we replaced the mower, didn't we?
Yeah, we, we put one of the mowers down.
Done, okay. Is there anything else for cemetery that you can think of that we didn't talk about during the budget season?
Well, uh, I, I met with, uh, Brian that does the mowing here now, and, uh, he's going to, uh, write up a contract for, uh, Christina to look at. He gave me an estimate of about seventeen thousand dollars, dollars to do all the mowing. It's more than what we're paying now, but he has all his own equipment.
Okay.
So we don't really, you know, we'll save on our equipment and hopefully we can sell a couple of the mowers that are in good condition.
How much more is it? Just do you happen to know? Is it like significant?
He quoted me around seventeen thousand. We currently pay about ten, but we're using our equipment, so you, you add up all the maintenance that we put in and everything there, it's pretty much, you know, going to be an even break, a little more, but, you know, a big headache out of the way.
Yeah.
Did you have questions about that?
Cemeteries?
Pardon?
All the cemeteries?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's three.
Three?
Yeah, North Lanford Hill and the Old Bury Grounds.
Are there four North Lanford? There's seven. There's.
There's, yeah, but, but there, there, we can't maintain all seven because some, two of them are on Springfield Water. And the one that's over on Round Hill Road, uh, someone's been maintaining that. I have no clue who's doing it, but God bless them. We're happy that they're there. I check out every now and then and was over doing it, doing a great job, so I'm not going to disturb the buggy.
The Hill Cemetery, the Old Bury Old Ground and.
And North Lanford, yeah.
Conservation Commission's not here, so we can't talk to them. Uh, Disability Commission, who is that?
That would be Margaret, myself, uh, Mary, you left, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Um, help me with the other two names.
Linda Barnard.
And, and another lovely resident.
Did we already spend that ten thousand, I think?
So when I started, you guys had gotten ten, a ten thousand dollar grant. It was a reimbursement grant, but never used it.
Okay.
So it went away.
Okay.
So we reapplied this year, haven't heard back yet.
Okay.
They haven't done awards yet.
All right, so we're waiting on the grant.
And the ADA compliant grab bars for the town hall, what happened with that? Is that still?
That's all the same. So the signage, the egress, the grab bars, door handles and hooks, those were the three things that were included on this year's grant submission.
Now, in the master plan, that was that document I just showed you guys, there was a dollar amount in there that back out to two thousand twenty eight, that ball field and playground accessibility improvements of a hundred grand.
I think that includes the drainage. I think we were looking at, because unfortunately it, it impacts the playground and remember it washes out all the chips that we put in there. Um, so I think that that's mostly what it is. I don't even think that has anything to do with playground equipment. It's just uh, drainage and then maybe, um, putting in some new, some sort of soft padding or whatever for the kids.
Are you talking about the playground?
Yeah.
I thought an engineer came in and said it would cost a hundred fifty thousand dollars to do.
Yes, so I think that's where that hundred thousand is sort of starting.
Where you're budgeting for it?
No, they just said that it will offset.
Yeah.
And then nothing was done after that.
You, I, maybe if we could just sort of revise that, um, report from the engineer that came in and gave us, that would be interesting to look at. I don't even know what I would search under.
Assuming that.
I do remember that happening.
Sure, that's somewhere we're looking to find it.
I'll try to look.
I wasn't involved.
I believe it was grant funded to get the report done. It might have been. Do you remember people were all up here looking around town hall and we met with, so I can't remember which administrator that was.
It had to be Christopher. It wasn't that long ago.
I was with that in the.
In the job description of the property management group to be looking at things like that, maybe pull the old engineer report and say, here's what it was back in two thousand whatever, right? But I, we would need to have that up to.
Okay.
But maybe that hundred thousand needs to be pulled up if it's getting dangerous out there.
Yeah, and it's probably, I'm sure it's going to be an increased price at this point, one hundred fifty.
But the time this was put together, again, in this document, it had new fire highway facility design. It was suggesting that we make a capital investment of six hundred fifty thousand. I don't think that was ever done.
No, we don't have any in the building.
So right now we have nothing in there, but we should be, um, as we progress on the firehouse, we need to end the highway. We need to consider what that's going to be.
And you had to have money in there at some point because you paid for the architect and.
We paid for it, yeah.
Yeah.
Some of that money was allocated and spent. You just need to allocate and spend more.
Yeah, right.
No.
I don't know how much that rose.
We paid for an architect, but didn't get a plan.
No.
No.
You got through the first stage. Yeah.
Of design.
Of design. You didn't get plans. Plans are another three hundred something thousand.
Yeah, I was just going to say, so if we allocated, if we, for this, we wrote in like three hundred fifty thousand in there. For looking at.
I think that might be just engineering. I know the O P M was what, another hundred and something thousand?
On top of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're looking at another six. Just to get to the bidding. Yeah, we're looking at another six.
Which we don't even have six hundred thousand in.
Oh, come on, it's pocket change.
Free cash. Okay.
Okay, so what we really should do though is step back and say, what is that number? And I'll get in here as part of the plan.
I'm still waiting on a reply from the OPM.
I know a wonderful OPM.
Instead of instead of spending all that money on engineering, just make a swell up on the hill, carving across to get rid of three quarters of the water. You know, just with a dozer and get it over by the baseball field, there's already, there's already one there, they already have a ditch there. You know, the amount of money you're gonna spend on engineering for drains.
Oh, right, that's for the playground area, yeah.
Yeah.
But for this, let's try to at least put an estimate in there. And Christina, can I get that to you?
Sure.
What's that?
I, if you want an estimate, I'd say seven fifty.
For seven fifty?
It's just an estimate, so it's. No, not construction.
So you're telling me that the engineering team came back and said it's gonna cost you another three hundred and something thousand dollars to do this phase? I thought it was just OPM that we were having a problem with.
We, well, I don't think you have a problem when the architects per say, you had a contract that says. The first amount of money, whatever that is, Christine probably knows it off the top of her head, get you to. The base plan, and then you go from that base plan that town had approved, to go to the architectural drawings to bid, was another three hundred thousand dollars. Which is already in the contract. So you know you got three hundred fifty thousand dollars of current architects, but the issue is that OPM didn't do their.
I know.
Who killed it, right?
Right.
Um, and so, as Christina said, she said that she didn't hear back from the OPM, so. At some point, because the board, the last time we brought this to the board, the board, which was a different, slightly different. Board decided that we should stick with this current OPM, you may have to revise that.
Yeah, well, the idea was that. Going up for bid for a brand new OPM, who who would have to then backtrack and learn just part of it, we were at the time. Believing that it was gonna be more more cost effective to stick with the current one, not that we wanted to because of the issues that we've had. Um, our thought was then as soon as we got to construction that we would go and and switch, but it seems like that's not gonna be. Effective, and we may have to revisit and switch that up.
Well, could we put it on as an agenda item to kind of to closure to it? Cuz they're not responding at this point.
Yeah.
And, you know, I mean, I've already gave Mike, you know, a number of times, even in the beginning, which was, you know. From the work that I saw from the OPMs and everybody else that was on that team, right, product team, the outcome. They didn't deserve to continue, and not only that, there was no project plan. You know, when it, when an OPM doesn't put a product plan together, you gotta go, I thought, what's going on?
So you're asking for on the next agenda for select board, that we look, we discuss putting the OPM for fire project back up to this?
Yeah.
Adam, what are your thoughts on that?
I just hope I live long enough to see something happen. Uh, I I don't think what we've done so far has worked, so I'm fine switching. Doesn't, I was on a bus to that group.
They've already said if they did, we we aren't gonna get the same project managers, they're not gonna have any of that depth information.
Yeah.
I don't think starting over with a new company is that hard, there's not.
Yeah.
Realistically, it's like, okay, here's where we are.
Can you attend either in graces with your presence in person or via Zoom next Monday?
Yes.
Okay, so yes, we can fit that on the agenda.
And maybe by then we can have all the numbers and kind of.
Would you prefer that I be in person?
I mean, always, but whatever you can do.
You're the first person ever to say that to me, but yeah.
Okay, moving along, um, the fire department. Did we or do we not replace the brush vehicle?
It is coming in the first quarter, likely February, March.
It's fun.
It's been funded, right?
It's funded, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Replace the turnout gear.
That is an ongoing cycle of replacement, so that's that's like a every year thingy.
So when does it become less a capital expenditure and more budget thing, if it's every year?
It's a good question. I think historically, they had been listed as CapEx primarily because. You have, the gear itself lasts for like eight years, and that was the logic. Doesn't have to be that way, but.
So you're not replacing all the gear, you're doing it.
No, 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 that's a, yeah, that's a very small portion of it, unfortunately, it's expensive.
You know, extraction tools, twenty thousand?
Extrication, uh, yeah, I mean, that's a wish list item. For us, we, ours are old, and they have much newer technology that's much easier to work with. I I would like to, the one drawback to it again, is it comes back to the. Purpose fit for of the station, so the the issue, the other issue we have in addition to vehicle size. Uh, is that more and more of the tools that are used for the apartment are. Lithium batteries, meaning they're rechargeable, and none of our existing trucks. Are capable of being plugged in to maintain a charge of batteries, uh, so it's uh. You know, we're, I I would like to replace our extrication tools. If that had to push, I would push it until after we get a new engine, because the engine I have can't support the new. What the newer technology extrication tools are.
Looks like we have the same situation with the new SCBA bottles.
So, yeah, the the SCBA bottles were all replaced by grant funding, so I'm not exactly, I don't remember that being on. The list, I don't know if that was a relic from when the other group was there, or the the past chief was there, but um. We don't, we don't require any SCBA bottle replacement at this time.
Whoa.
We ju, that was what we got from all that grant funding, we replaced like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of bottles.
Replace uh engine number one.
That's a big one, that one's gotta go, but that's the chicken and egg one where we'd have to special order it to be small.
And that one we're looking at, four hundred?
Uh, uh, that's probably a pipe dream, uh, my guess is it'd probably be six, six fifty.
So Adam, does it make sense to start putting money aside in a capital plant for fire engine?
Yes, I think we should probably establish practice of doing that just every year, and. It doesn't mean you have to buy a fire truck, but at least you start accruing money for it.
So do we wanna create the stabilization account then for that?
I wouldn't hate that idea. Then you maybe put money, raise it appropriate for a couple of years before you have. And by the time we build the fire station, there'll be like twenty million dollars in the. Which would be the price of a new firing. Yeah, exactly, it'll have a twelve year lead time, so that'll be great, yeah.
So for whatever reason, in the old plan again, there was something here, we'll replace rescue with new or used medium duty.
That would, I do wanna do, so uh, what? Yeah, I don't know how much background you want on all this stuff, but so our existing rescue, rescue truck is just used for medical calls. Uh, the drawback to that is, is we have to, you have to make a decision when. The issue we always have is not so much, uh. We don't wanna have to think too much about which vehicle to take, so if it's a car accident, as an example. Uh, we usually have, if we're lucky, we have two, maybe three people show up at the station at first. You have to pick which truck is going to go. Um, and the existing medical truck is not sufficient for um. Doing extrication or anything else with a car accident, but our existing squad truck that was purchased several years ago. Is not big enough to carry a lot of medical stuff, so uh, yeah, it. It's added to the long list of, uh, I think we have to take a much smarter approach to. Um, how we acquire, what kind of vehicles we acquire and how we acquire them, so at some point. Uh, not in the immediate future, uh, we should replace the um, the rescue truck that we have, which is really just a pickup truck. Um, and replace it with a proper rescue truck that's like capable of going on the pike, isn't gonna sustain catastrophic damage if it gets in an accident on the pike. That kinda stuff, so we would want to upgrade that truck a bit.
Yeah, in the original plan, it was in two thousand twenty eight for.
Yeah, that's about the right time, I think.
About three twenty five, is what they have.
Yeah, and I, again, that's on in today's prices, so. God only knows what that looks like, but that's an estimate, it was more just thinking farther ahead of. The capital plan, so that we're actually planning.
The gear extractor and dryer was in there for sixteen thousand?
Can't do anything with that until we get a new station, so you can, that can wait. There's also usually pretty good grants available for that, so we should be able to grant fund that. They're almost always like a match, but it should be a minor match, like costs a thousand dollars.
And build a training area was in two thousand twenty seven.
Yeah, uh, again, that's a, you don't have a spot to put that at this point, so we we're, again, we're just trying to. Forecast needs with that, not necessarily things that we have to get ready to do right now.
Yeah, so. And and I think you said this also when we met during budget season, that the number one thing is. Certainly, you've already got the money for the brush vehicle, but certainly would be the number one engine.
Yeah, we've got it, that, yeah, that is hanging on by a thread, yeah.
I mean, if you have, you know, this is dated, so if you have other things that you're thinking out. Outside of the building itself, then you need to let us know.
We don't have anything that's too major, uh, from that, nothing that I wouldn't be able to redirect from uh OpEx, and that it's nothing that. I would envision, uh, you know, having a, a, what is our criteria, like five plus year lifespan or something like that, so. I can almost always re redirect some OpEx, or we also have, we've, we've been extremely frugal. This is just for your information, we've been extremely frugal with, we get a uh revenue component when we respond to the pike. And that, uh, we, they pay us, I think it's four hundred and fifty dollars or four hundred and ninety dollars per vehicle that responds to any incident on the pike. The drawback is, it doesn't matter if you're there for ten minutes or ten hours, it's still four hundred dollars. But we have never spent any of the money out of that, so I wanna say it's accrued somewhere like twenty thousand dollars on there. So if we had to dip in for equipment purchase out of that, we could do that. We've been treating it very much like a rainy day fund until this point.
Yeah, if I remember, you had a substantial increase in budget this year, so for stuff, right?
Yeah, I can't get over the cost change in stuff we've been having to acquire, it is ludicrous.
Um, alright, we're gonna skip highway.
Yeah.
Cause they're not here.
Since they're not here, though, I wanna ask Adam a question, um, because I was with Ray up at the salt shed. And there's some old car up there that used to be for the COA. And he said it's completely ate out, you know, mice have gotten in there, and and he made the comment of. Well, you guys could use that as test vehicle.
Okay.
Vehicle, if you wanna leave it there, great, if not, let's decide, are you gonna get rid of it? We're gonna keep it because it's just junk.
I'll go up and take a look at it and see if we can use it for that, yeah. We always like cutting stuff up.
Yeah. Okay, let's go to library.
Um, so, I'll let you start, I'm sorry. Uh, the seventeen thousand dollars of capital plan twenty twenty four. Um, I believe that that was for masonry improvements for part of that. Um, we only used a portion of the masonry improvements, and we used that to um prepare and stabilize the foundation. We did not use, um, we ended up not having to do any repointing because the building was so well constructed. That it was better off to just not repoint it, and then there was chimney repair that was also a part of that masonry repair. However, we elected not to do that at the time because we knew that we were going to be, that's right when the grant funding came available for us to apply for, so we had hoped. And luckily it panned out, that the grant would be something that would be able to cover that, so that masonry will be part of the construction grant. If the town elects to vote for the library construction project, um, but I do want to just say is that if the town does not go through the library construction project. All of the maintenance costs for the library building will be on the town, and those will be substantial. Um, I did not prepare a separate capital plan for that eventuality, but it should be known that there is a significant amount of. Capital planning that would need to be done, um, that would probably be in excess of what town would spend on the grant portion that we would have to cover. If the town does not proceed with that expansion.
Are you gonna present that?
Yes, that will definitely be presented, um, so we'll have that.
Okay.
Yeah, um, and that would be obviously repairing the masonry on the chimney because it's currently horrible to in and out. Um, and obviously the other things like hazmat, um, issues that we've been, you know. Recently informed of with the hazmat testing, um, obviously the AD accessibility, which is not fixed by putting a ramp on the building. Because it had to extend to the inside as well, it's not good enough to just get in the building, you gotta be able to use it.
Yeah.
Um, and then the fire code violation of not having a secondary egress, so there are numerous things that would, um. I can't even fathom how much that would to all cost, uh, it is truly extreme.
But you guys are gonna make an estimate on that, right?
Um, yes, there will be, I I'm not, like, I do not know if this is going to be like a down to the penny professional estimate, that is like, but it will be like a very good estimate. By the OPM that will have an accurate, I would like what this would cost.
Perfect, okay.
So there is that, and then in addition to um, this, that we did do the patio, so that's checkbook money used. Um, and we are in the library design phase in building, and um, that's where we're at right now. So I don't know why that's on capital plan twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight, um.
This was again, your.
Okay, alright, and I'm like, so that may be accurate because the phase and build would, that could be what that is kind of projecting out. Um, so obviously, we don't have that exact estimate right now.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm not sure if that helps answer things, we're at a crossroad, and if this was in two months from now, I would have really solid answers for you. Um, but I just don't have my.
Then we'll just update this.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, like, again, like, it it would look very similar for the community, um, with either outcome. There's not much of a difference, it's just a very big difference with what the community gets. So.
Do you have to go?
I'm so sorry.
Do you wanna?
I'm not on, I'm, there's nothing.
Yeah, there's nothing that.
So I'm, I am gonna split up when she was done.
So I'm sorry, thanks so much, I'll see you on Friday. Jennifer was so lovely to volunteer the cider and donut truck for the Halloween trick or treating that's happening. The Little Goblins.
Jennifer, do you have any thoughts on transfer station for capital expenses?
No, because ours is coming through the grant, we don't get the grant, we're not doing it.
Okay.
So it's pretty, okay, yeah, like the last one, so.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thanks, have a great night.
You too.
Library's done, then.
Yeah.
Alright, town hall, the fireproof filing cabinets, what did we spend this year? Money?
We are in the process of taking stuff out to get it shredded and. Cleaning up what we have.
Yeah, but we bought the the safe already, correct?
Well, you voted on it.
We quoted on it.
Voted.
Voted.
Right, what was it, twenty? I can't remember, did we vote on twenty or ten?
Um, we voted on ten. Give or take.
Okay, but we got an official price from the company, right?
We were looking, we found, we got it down to ten, on ten thousand dollars.
But it hasn't been ordered yet.
Right, we haven't purchased it.
Okay.
Because they're cleaning it up.
Okay, so I can get rid of this thirty thousand now. And then, do we need ten thousand each year for this?
No, I think at the time, those were quoting three safes.
Okay, so we're just looking at that, fantastic.
At this point, you don't think you're gonna be asking for more, do you? At this point, you don't think you're gonna be asking for more, do you?
Don't know.
Um. What about the website? Any thoughts, would that be a capital expenditure or?
Yeah, I'm going.
That's its website?
Yeah.
Where's that sit? Just under you, just, no, I know, it sits under Wendy, but. She's in the IT account, right, okay. So if we wanted to do anything, it would go in the IT account. Hey, any other questions on town clerk?
We're skipping tree warden.
Yeah. Let's go to water.
Water department, you don't have anything on there. Oh dear.
Yes.
Okay, so the storage account, you're still, the storage tank, you're still looking at. There was talk about some grant funding for that, and that was on pause, correct?
Yeah, we got a, we, we have a plan for it, yeah. And there's, he was a plan on it.
Okay, so the plan is created, that's not what the seven, was that what the seventy-five thousand was for, or was it for construction? It was just for the plan?
Just design.
Yep.
Yeah, just designing.
And that's been paid for?
No.
No.
I, just, in this way, you know, there's, because I talked to Brad today, and. Then I talked to the engineers that are working the water.
Yeah.
Up here, and. There's two things that are happening, the D, what is it, the DEP? Is the most critical things for them, for us to pass go, like, okay, you guys are still working on it, that's good. Is the ozone. Equipment. And the intake, water intake into. Whatever that is.
Yeah, the water, the water intake goes out, and it's only down below the water six feet.
Right.
So if you get a drought in the water, drop six feet, you're out of water.
Yeah.
Or if it's in the winter time, you get two feet of frost, you're down fourteen.
So, these are, so what happened was. Um. These guys got a grant from One Stop for a hundred and twenty-five K. That was gonna go towards this water storage tank and a pump house. And. Because they got declined on the ozone grant recently, we saw that come through. Um, the engineering team's gonna talk to the DEP about moving money from. The One Stop Grant to the ozone project. If we start getting fines, it's like three hundred and fifty dollars a day. So, and we're not showing progress on this ozone area because we got declined for the grant. So when they speak to DEP next week. Um, they're gonna say that, hey, this is what we talked about in that meeting the other day. Hey, these guys applied for a grant for the ozone and got declined. Now they're having to kind of step back and reevaluate how are they gonna go forward.
So, why, why are we going back to ozone? It weren't, did we get away from ozone, and now, is it a mandated thing?
Ozone was broke down for years, and this is affecting your de, your disinfection byproducts.
Yeah.
This is why this is allowed.
But I thought that they wanted to get away from doing ozone, ozone and. Start doing more of the filtration, the sand filter, did that change, was that mandated, or?
Well, I think, I don't think they notified DEP that they were gonna get rid of it for good.
Okay.
Right, and it's a, um. It takes away one log of your system of removal, so you're out of compliance from that.
Okay, so that, so they're mandating that we bring our ozone back up, because I know one, one of the discussion points was that it's very expensive.
Yeah. We did go over in the, uh, uh, two, two smaller units, and, uh, new, new air compressor with a good dryer and all that. It, they're pretty, pretty small now, a little more better energy efficient.
Okay, yeah.
The other, the other ones are way too big.
Yeah. Okay.
But Weston's third net list, and I'm sorry, Pierce and Brighter are assuming around three hundred K. For a new building treatment, okay?
Yeah.
That's the build phase, the, before the build phase, there's the initial investment, which is, I don't know, at this point. But, in other words. There's a lot going on there, um, and a lot of projects going on at the same time.
Yeah, there are.
Okay. And the water main replacement. Which is huge, is not even really on the radar. Right?
No, it's been talked about for years. And then the North Street.
What is that, infrastructure replacement, North Street?
That's a. That's, that's just solid pipe connected to your pump station.
Okay. And just to revisit the one on Russell Sage Road, it's, it is cracking the road in several locations. Um, so I'm just putting that out there, I've noticed in the videos we've been here, it's significantly backed. And every time I brought it up, it, it'll break at some point on Russell Sage, it's happened three times, so. So, um, the water? Yeah, because they dug up the road here, they dug it out down by Maple Lane where the underpass is. Oh, yeah. They dug it out there twice, and up here, and before that, I called water department, said, just so you know. There's a crack that goes completely parallel, like, in the road, like, it cracks. Yeah. And I'm like, just so you know, there's a crack here, and it wasn't there last year, and then sure enough, it'll break. And that's when we won't have water, so I'm just putting it out there that, there, that continues to be something that. Oh, absolutely, yeah, it's been talked about for years, but that's, and unfortunately, when we redid the road, we didn't have the money to do the water before, remember this? And so we redid the road, knowing that we were gonna have to unfortunately dig it up to do repairs, because couldn't afford, it's like. Over a million dollars, I think. And I'm not upset about it at all, like, as a result, I just mean that it's gonna, it, it, it's gonna break again. So, it's, it's almost like, yes, kind of plan for it.
The water pipe's gonna break again, is that what we're talking about?
Breaks on that line often because of the age, I think, and everything, and the size of the pipe. Yeah. But then that's what this is, they've been talking about forever, is putting money into doing a whole renovation, but. It's just we never have the money to do it, and.
I think I would have put that before the SCADA project, I'm sorry.
I think the state mandated the SCADA project.
The SCADA project will help out, the quality of water will help.
Right.
But that was mandated, wasn't it?
I'm not positive by many.
I think that was one of the things when DEP came back with what we had to do.
So did the consent order talk about SCADA, or no?
The consent order, thank you.
Um, is that one of them? I don't think it was, right?
No?
Well, no, the, you mean the three amendments?
No.
No, 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 the consent order from DEP. That is saying that we need to do the ozone.
That's on there, but all I have, yeah, I never saw the consent order, but I do have a spreadsheet that is not with me.
I don't think they're, I don't think they're gonna bother us with that because it's already started.
It's already started, yeah, it's almost done.
But I thought originally it was on there, so I don't, might be wrong.
Okay. Alright, is there any department that we might be missing, you guys, accessories, you don't have anything really that you need to. Go upgrade in software or anything like that?
You wanna talk about that?
Oh, boy. Come on up.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's so great, so. You're fine, you're comfortable.
We, we, me and Dave haven't had a chance to talk about it, but recently what I've been experiencing is that. The system with which we use for keeping parcels, record cards.
Patriot?
Yeah, Patriot. Is one of the oldest ones that they have. And today, when I couldn't access some information. Um, one of the upper management professionals said to me, you guys need to update this because they're gonna. Probably start phasing it out as they're not even gonna support this anymore. They actually, they bounced me around to four different people because nobody knew how to help me. So, I don't know the cost on that, we'll have to figure out. In conversation, but just to put it out there that that will probably need to be updated at some point.
Is that a yearly thing we pay, or is that a one time?
I don't think we've explored it enough to say whether it's gonna be a yearly ongoing cost or a one time. The way most software is going these days is probably gonna be an ongoing.
Yeah.
I think we pay for the, so for what I, I asked them, and they said, so it's one month some to acquire said software. And then there is a yearly or ma- maintenance fee to keep the support and the. The accessibility with their help desk and other.
Does that program, like, speak to any other programs that we have, like, okay, so.
So that talks to the Vadar system, which is, is responsible for sending out excise tax and all bills for each parcel.
So, upgrading the Patriot to whatever the appropriate level is would still work with all of our.
Yes, and they said that it actually works a lot more efficient.
Yeah.
Um, and they even said that they offer, when I talked to them today, they offer a bunch of training, there's like, there's a lot more into this new system. Okay, I mean, obviously.
Is that what it's called, Patriot?
Yeah.
Is there like different, different levels of Patriot?
I mean, there's different versions from what they told me.
We'll get to a point where you'll call, no one's gonna be able to answer.
Well, and that's kind of what happened today, because when I called, they were like, we have to track someone down, we gotta call you back, it took them like three hours to get back to me.
I, you know.
And I was just changing an address. I wasn't even doing anything, no, and I'm just putting it out there like that, that was all I was trying to do, um.
I mean, I personally, um, I think we should put it in there. I used to work for a software company, and they will, they will just stop. Then all of a sudden, you're gonna be like, well, who's gonna help us transfer all this data? And they're gonna say, we don't have anybody that knows something about this, so it's gonna do it anymore.
Yeah.
So I would suggest that we get it on this year's, you know, maybe do a. Or, uh, you know, you have to do an RP probably, because the software's gonna be over the thousand. Would be my guess.
They didn't give me an exact cost.
Pay a fee for it now, or is it because?
I think we pay a yearly fee.
And we do pay yearly license fee.
But it's not a lot.
Just the license fee, that's it?
Yeah.
I haven't paid it yet in my time here, so I'm not exactly sure, I have to refer to.
That's probably the same system we were using thirty-five years ago.
I feel like I remember when we got it, so it can't be thirty-five years, maybe ten years.
Offers what we need, though, right? We don't have to go somebody else.
Yeah, they actually refer to the one we write, we, we have as the classic. So, they offer more, but yeah, and, and, yeah.
Does, does Harold have a preferred software, you know?
That's a good question.
Is that something we could ask him and find out if he has a preferred software vendor? Um.
I'm pretty sure they use Patriot too, because our catalyst is the name of the company, so it runs it out.
I mean, he has to deal with our software, right?
Yes.
Param. So, that would be a good question to ask him and say, you know, and what version? I mean, obviously you'd want the latest first, right, you don't wanna go involved version, because then you just have to upgrade all the time, so. But yeah, I put that as a hot ticket item, because if they all of a sudden just. Yeah, they don't bother calling us anymore.
He doesn't plug in the traffic.
Yeah. Right. No.
I think that's all departments.
Yes, but I think that's it.
Okay.
Isn't it?
Yeah. Okay, um, does anyone have anything else that they wanted to bring up while we're all together?
Um, I had put together just some stuff I'm gonna send to everybody today after the meeting, we wanted to have the meeting first so that we could explain everything. Um, and not just me sending you emails and you guys going, what is this? So every department will get, uh, this, it's just a letter explaining, um. Your, how to submit your capital project requests, we're at, so you'll have a form that's fillable online, right? So you, this, you'll click on this and you'll be able to put in all your information, this will count as one project request. With each project request, we just want a simple narrative, so the project description, need, intended use and benefits, estimated life expectancy of the project. Your proposed funding sources and the lead slash responsible party, and then there's submission instructions on there. So this will go out to all departments so that we can gather your capital project requests, um.
Nice.
And then we will shortly, hopefully, in conjunction with the finance committee.
Of one.
After November third, hopefully, yes.
Okay, November third.
Yes, um. We will start putting together, uh, the documents for the, uh, budget work, workbooks that will be sent out.
Okay, yeah.
Great. I love this, thank you. Do you want me to hold off until I have a clearer idea of what, okay, thank you.
And, and who's finance, could he, who's the? Who's the other?
And then we will be on November third doing a review of an applicant. Which is wonderful, but just everybody keep in mind, it's still only two and not a quorum, but two is better than one.
Yes, we're making progress. It's a new breed, so it's a hundred percent.
So if you have friends, neighbors, get involved.
We aren't currently involved in anything with town.
Yes, yeah, yeah, that is a caveat.
Yes. Well, I've learned since moving here, everybody I talk to, I'll say something, and they're like, oh, I used to be on, everybody's.
Everyone's being a parent, so I have you. Um, I did wanna ask town clerk about updating, um, bylaws on the website.
It is a work in progress.
Okay, um, because there's a lot on there that is outdated by several years. So we do wanna make that a priority, make sure we're going back and updating.
Well, and especially with all this going on with.
You know, we're going to be always maybe six months to a year behind. Because we have to wait for the attorney general to review everything.
Sure.
Before we can actually include it, but once it's included, it is effective the day the town voted.
Okay, yes.
I mean. Help to figure out, but.
But there's a lot of backlogging right now that you'll be. Okay, um, what else did I have? I'm having a mind blank, do you have anything else?
I have one small announcement.
Yes.
The poop museum is coming to Blandford.
Love it.
Um, it, this is grant sponsored from the Hilltown Community Health Center. Uh, and the, um, early childhood education and care department. So on Saturday, November fifteenth, we will have Suzie from England, who will be here to talk about poop with. You and whoever else you would like to bring, Michaela's really excited. The kids are super excited about this.
No, 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 share with my husband, yeah, no.
It's not a joke, it's real.
Are you looking for?
Yes. Oh my god, no, uh, so this is actually a real thing, so there's somebody that is, uh, she is an expert in poop. Um, and she goes around and talks about, she's like a biologist from England. Who is on her like national museum tour in the US. Libraries have, and other museums and educational facilities have been hosting the poop museum. Um, and I have read nothing but rave reviews, um, she is not number two, she is number one. She is coming to Blandford, and she is bringing with her, um, actual poop that can be eaten. I do not want to know, I do not want to know, but, um, you will also. There will, yeah, you will be learning about all sorts of animal poop, um, and. About poop facts, um, animals doing poop dances, um, poop tech power, animals eating their mouth poop, I don't even know.
Bring this to my fifth grader.
Yes, yes, like, seriously.
Ask you, how are you, how are you making this known? Are you sending it to schools? Are you sending it to, okay.
School, Facebook, the Country Journal, I'm sure would love to run this on their front page.
What's on?
Uh, this is happening at two PM on Sunday.
Girls are in states, they're just, you know.
So.
You wanna let them measure?
Gonna miss the poop factory, yeah, that's factory. So, this is actually a, a educational opportunity. Um, we're getting the potty started, so. So, yes, yes.
Fantastic.
Thank you, thank you.
You were doing all things amazing, I love it.
And it is completely grant funded, the library is not paying a penny for this, we are using this as an opportunity to increase engagement with, um. All of the different communities, the Hilltown Family Center is promoting this, uh, very widely to make sure that they're bringing people into Blandford. Because they have other opportunities that they have offered to other communities, and I wanted to get in line for that. So, um, I had a request at the waiting for the poop museum, because they were, um, a little bit pricey. So they funded this, and they also, um, are, uh, very embarrassing. Every single day, I'm embarrassed by the story walk when I walk by, um. Watson Park area, and they have also written a grant to get the replacement board.
Yes.
So that is coming in November there, the grant will be submitted, so I'm sorry, it is not due to lack of care or love. It is due to lack of financial funding and carpentry skills.
Yeah.
Um.
We learn as we go.
Yes, we sure do, um, so yes, anyway, so that is, that is all the news that is fit to print.
I love that.
Yes, hope to see you all there, okay, you.
Thank you.
Oh, I I should also mention on a more serious note, uh, but not nearly as enjoyable and to talk about, uh, World War One. There is a jump here, we are doing a program on World War One with John Crane on uh September, I'm sorry, November eighth. And he is going to be talking about his grandfather's war diaries uh from in the trenches of France. So the diaries themselves are also available digitally because he has transpired them and they're all in um. Yeah, format, so if you're interested in this World War One presentation, it's going to be absolutely phenomenal, um, so that will be on September.
The new calendar?
I do, I have that for you, I brought that and a copy of the poop museum flyer for you. Yes, yes, thank you so much.
Um, the other thing, Jack, you was, yeah, annual town meeting minutes.
Yeah, the annual town meeting minutes, are they up?
I think you said they're done.
Are they done?
Yeah.
Are they on the, on the website?
If they're not, there should be.
Okay, yeah, if we can just make sure they get to, um. Okay, good, I think we're good.
Alright.
Thank you, guys, um, adjourned at seven. There's something else. Well, we tend to do, I think we did seven because we. Yes, we did seven for this one, right?
I gotta feel.
Yeah.